The first item on the agenda today is Ryan Getz, our Highway Director. With an update.
Good afternoon. I want to update for Highway Department. We have put in service two Covada ME6 that all have been directors with driving controllers. They were put in service on July 9th. Both are operating daily. They are able to complete seven to 10 miles per day more than rolling per day than John Beer was. So we're doing each tractor's going between 20, 25 miles each day. Chip and seal, our roaming is done. The dry conditions this year, most things are. The skid rollers, the tender pole and scoop it up like. It's a little less high ability. You know, for the residents of the county. But we'll go back and do that up. Seated, the wedge and loan process is nearly complete. But what we have made late June or actually early June, it's been looking very long. That's been out approximately very smooth. Be very nice once you consider the. Process that doubles out here as spots, takes out some of the dips. Just makes the chip and seal process move it once the road is done.
For any of those spots that stay though, when you chip seal, will that get refilled with stone?
Should fill pretty good, almost.
Okay.
Planning to start chip and seal process in one year, maybe July 29th. That's available pending, there's several surrounding counties chip and seal earlier in here. So we do it later so we can make sure we get two tanker loads to keep our productivity up. Guys in. To buy of the oil and the stone.
Do you know how many miles we're.
Two hundred miles. Right at seventy-four this year.
Seventy-four, okay.
Be finalizing the last documents needed by the county, the Cross and bench grant. So if we do that today, the. Mr. Fox, we're going to review that contract, we'll be finalizing.
Yep, okay.
And fuel tank, back to community crossing, sorry. Finn and Brown was the one we've been looking at probably starting late August, early September. Then thereafter, we'll have no contract here starting when you ask all. So it'll be there for a little while, but. Both fuel tanks were both cleaned, back to normal service. Heavy rains from property depression barrel, slow progress on the ninth. This probably goes completely out scaled on the 11th. We appreciate the patience of our fuel users during the time where there was not fuel available. Communication by our office, state attorneys, a lot of ways to make sure everybody was prepared ahead of time. I plug a few on their vehicles. They did find a little bit more water than what they expected in the diesel tanks. So there was some algae starting to grow. Both tanks, I haven't seen the pictures yet, which was sent to report. But both tanks, they said were in really good condition inside. So hopefully they'll last us in over there twenty-five years.
Yeah, we are about to agree.
Yeah. Any questions on that?
With Finn and Brown, are they going to keep a lane open, do we know, or?
Yes.
Okay, so they'll do one, they'll do like westbound and better do eastbound. Okay.
Players, they'll be signing this out. To be pretty well. Excellent.
Okay. Good. Any other questions for Ryan? Appreciate the update, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda today is Nathan Builder from Planning and Building with some flat approvals.
Four here. So. Start with the one, third Woods. This is actually in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. They approved it, Plan Commission approved it back in May and there were a couple minor changes that had to be tweaked. Dealing with the well and some easements. Comes before you because since it is in their jurisdictional area, the actual right of way and dedication is to the county since it's county road. So that's the primary thing that you're looking at with this one.
That's unanimous.
I believe it was with the city, yes.
Oh, it's been through, oh, okay.
Yeah, that's okay. City Plan Commission, because it's in the jurisdiction area, but comes before you because it's county road.
Okay.
I'm going to approve third Woods, as presented.
Have a motion and a second to approve third Wood. Any further discussion? During that, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your hand. Those who say.
The next one we've got is Smokey Acres. This is actually a partial replat of a parcel down on 600 East, south of 14. This was originally a one lot plat down a couple of years ago and the owner desired to split it into two lots, which is acceptable. And then vacate a portion back to the original farm tract. So this did receive approval through the county plan commission. And the vacation part is administrative thing through plan commission. So that doesn't go through you guys, just the replat portion.
I'm going to approve Smokey Acres as presented.
So you have a motion and a second to approve Smokey Acres and further discussion. During that, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your hand. Those who say yes.
Thank you. True Find Acres, I'll be next. This is a simply plat up off of Spear Road. Basically recombining several different underlying pieces of plats as well as bringing in some unplatted acreage off of the east end. Basically making a nice rectangular piece. After this had been done, one of the adjacent property owners said, I have a whole bunch of pieces too. I want to do that too. So we might be seeing a similar plat with one of neighbors here in the next couple of months. Again, because it's essentially replat adding acreage to received approval through the Plan Commission. Notably with this one, Spear Road is not dedicated because the property actually goes up to the existing right of way of Spear Road. So you're not, you don't actually have any right of way to accept in this one, just the easements.
Do you know why it was so chopped up previously?
Because when the previous plats were done, they included basically very snakey pledge pole plots. And so when the driveways were actually put in, they were put in straight. And so there were different deeds back and forth among property owners to reflect the actual locations.
I think I saw this one on an email or something and it was all chopped up.
It's kind of a mess. This definitely cleans it up. I'm going to approve True Find as presented.
And we'll motion a second to approve True Find. Any further discussion? During that, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your hand. Those who say yes passes the unanimous.
Okay, and then this last one is Ingram Estates, Section 2. Up off of, don't remember, 350 East to South 500 North. It is Section 2 because the same owner had split off a previous lot immediately to the south of this one. You can see that it's lot one of Ingram Estates. This is basically doing the same thing. Did receive a variance through the BZA before going to Plan Commission due to the lot depth versus width ratio. And then also you'll note that this does not provide a dedicated right of way for 350 East. It provides a right of way easement, which is equivalent under for subdivision purposes. It's just not the highest standard that we typically look for, but it does meet the subdivision code. They did that for a couple of different reasons. The biggest one is it mirrors what was done with Lot 1, so you don't have a jacket edge of right of way. But for highway purposes, right of way easement is still as effective as dedicated.
Would you approve Ingram Estates, Section 2, as presented? Have a motion and a second to approve, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your hand. Those who say yes passes the unanimous.
Thank you, that covers the plat. So we those for you to sign after meeting, any questions for me?
I was candidate.
Good rain for pretty much the entire time. We were camping up there, so I don't have a nice suntan, but I have a lot of mosquito bites, so. It was nice.
Back, back.
Yep, good to be back. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda today is Paul Warden from Community Corrections.
Good afternoon. I just wanted to check in and see if there's any additional information that you need from me to move forward with the community correction facility included in that.
Can you just quickly give a high level overview of what we've learned from the study?
Yeah, so I'm glad about that, because first I want to touch on that. First of all, I think it was a great compliment to the county for investing in that property. I think it was well worth it, obviously that's not my expertise, but also that it's been maintained so well. Really their bill is there's not any major concerns with investing more funds and going forward with the recommended renovations.
Okay. Truce, so you sit on the committee that review. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I was happy that the study came back in our favor and we can work on it. So we can set the building up for the next fifteen to twenty years, hopefully have that give stretch. But yeah, always done a great job navigating all that, helping the committee. Thank you. Marjorie has obviously done all the late work, she's part of, you know, getting the codes. And he did encourage us to maybe increase that to six thousand, six hundred and fifteen thousand if you go forward with the total renovation, just because so much time has went by now since he secured the codes. And also it's including our plan, obviously works kind of time sensitive to get it done.
I'm still very comfortable with the thing included in our offer plan.
I am as well.
Yeah, I know I texted you earlier, but I just want to publicly state that this is excellent, great information. I learned from it, appreciate it.
That was the suggestion of Commissioner Banks, he asked me to do this. That's helpful.
It was all you, Paula. Thank you.
Thank you guys. Love it, now for the whole sheet.
Okay, we're still very supportive.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is Lakeland Internet. I believe that's, if you could just introduce yourself.
Yeah, we did mention the same strategies, just wanted to introduce you guys to Mark by the way, Lakeland Internet. And thank you all for taking the time to present today. Has been done with the other providers in the area, we're asking Mark to show what a kind of like solution will look like for solving a broadband problem. Mark can put this up on the screen, I think. And hope you're gonna have that or not, but you can say yes and go up there. This one be, this is not a request for funding, this is just Mark's and Lakeland's opportunity to show what it would cost and what it would look like for them to do their fixed wireless solutions throughout the county. So if I want Mark, take your way and do your point, so.
Thanks for your time today.
Mark, before you start, a pleasure. I represent Lakeland Internet. I haven't been involved in this at all, I didn't know Mark was coming today, but I had even little work time to time, I just wanted to disclose that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So a little bit about Lakeland, owned by Chuck Surratt, people are sound, you may know that name. Obviously we spent a separation that just last year, majority shares we were. Chuck owns fourteen other companies. He started Lakeland Internet almost 10 years ago because in Steben County you didn't have great reliable internet at his lake home. Since then. We've continued to invest and continue growing. We've got fiber built in Hamilton, we've got fiber built in Lake James, Crooked Lake. We just bought a network in Leo, Indiana. So we're continuing to grow in both East and Indiana. Right now we have 3,000 customers, just under 3,000 customers, Stube and La Grange, a little bit of Michigan, Ohio. We'll have a fiber connection downtown Fort Wayne at the new pool. That Chuck's building. A little bit about me, worked for AT&amp;T for 22 years, Centennial Wireless is part of that. So I have a very strong understanding of small businesses versus big businesses. Got involved with Lakeland Internet seven years ago. I love working for Chuck, I love his community minded focus. When I was doing some work with DeKalb County and Zach and Sam Strategies. I'm just trying to share with counties the fact that you don't need to spend $50 million to get good internet out there in rural areas. The Toronto technology we're deploying now, it's what this plan is based off of. We can, we can cover 1,000 customers up to nine, 10 miles away with one tower. I'm not going to go through my slideshow, this is kind of information for you guys, I'll talk about some specific slide. Where I've done some preliminary studies to see what we could do potentially in Whitley County. Zach and Luke let me know that Northeastern RMC has fiber, reached out to them, they are very willing to work with us. I love the opportunity to take advantage of something that's already in the community. And it will honestly make a potential project like this much more viable because there is infrastructure in play already. A little bit about the Butler Tower, the spacer came out and I kind of do these road shows so I can really have people come out and see what this wireless technology can do. So when I say wireless, it's not your satellite, you think of, oh, you got a dish on side of your home, it points up to the, to the atmosphere. We're a terrestrial based wireless, so cell towers, even grain silos, even the corner of hall buildings, we can put stuff up on. But with this plan, what I've done is I found existing vertical assets, like all towers are already there. Towers, we have relationships with those tower companies so that we can get on at least space to deploy our equipment. Using the Northeastern RMC fiber ring, a small build to the tower to get fiber to the tower. Because this equipment. In its best case scenario, we can do 600 and 700 meg over the year in a huge footprint. So that's why it is an economically viable option when you're looking at county wide coverage, it's going to do so much. So the plan that I've got kind of worked out and preliminary plan, I think we're on slide nine, was with seven towers. Kind of on the outside of that, in the RMC ring, we will build fiber to those. With those seven towers, I can cover 15,000 homes in Whitley County. At minimum of 100 down, 20 meg hub. And that is very good segment for that area. I had analyzed the over round four, showed 3,100 addresses that were undershaped and unserved. This plan will cover all about 200 addresses. So what we typically do is we do a plan like this. And then when we have those little holes after the fact, once the main network's in place, we'll go and do little pop ups. We cover those missing ones. Because to me, it really makes sense not spend $50 million to build out an entire county. When the technology of this Toronto can do almost fiber like speeds. And in some future software upgrades, they will do 1.2 gig over the year, which is amazing. An art engineer for 22 years, this Toronto technology is amazing in what it does. And the reason is because you're mounting a square box on inside your house and it is all equivalent sources, a server. That gets 16 different signals in and then it recompiles that message so that you have a great connection back to the tower. And then we're fiber fed, so. It's amazing, latency typically sub 10 milliseconds, which latency is important on your Zoom calls. And you might see that buffering when you're loading webpages, latency, sub 20 milliseconds takes all of that out of the place, so. I have no problem if you guys would want to see this in person, you can do another one of the road shows like I've done in the past. Slide 11 will kind of show what we call a heat map. Anything that is red in that map. You're talking 500 meg down over the year. The 100 by 20 service level would be in the blue there or just the green kind of the edge there. So that's where it gets almost entirely the county covered by 100 by 20 service. Honestly, there's other information there. I'm going to take up a lot of your time, I just want to show you that there are viable options out there on, introduce Lakeland Internet. We are a Surratt Enterprises company. Chuck has given me the freedom to get involved in communities like this. We're local, we will find local people to manage the network. We've got a call center here in both Eastern and Indiana to service the customers. Up in Steben County, we have a lot of problems with the incumbents, the frontiers and media comms that if you have an outage, it might be three weeks before you get somebody even there to look at it. So my goal is always next day service if I can't get it in the same day. That's the stuff that matters to me because as a Surratt company, it's the relationship with your customers, relationship in the community that matters. So I'm here for hard questions. They're all Matt being, I'm awkward, anything. I am a Matt, so please don't be afraid to ask questions if I can't answer.
What's a monthly residential cost?
So we have plans as low as 50 bucks a month, that's 50 meg, that's usable. Honestly, I appreciate the 100 meg, that beat, it's kind of baselining. Most customers want these, need 100 meg. I mean, if you have six kids and 10 iPads and four TVs, yeah, you probably will. But for a 50 meg plan, you're about 50 bucks a month. We are small enough that when you talk about the. Affordable ACP plan. I did not take advantage of that with the government reimbursement, but I do, as long as a customer can show me that they've applied and qualify. We just, we just honor it. I've probably got 60 customers that we should eat the difference in that, give them the credit because it's the right thing to do. To manage that program from an ISP side, it wasn't, it was two times sensitive. So I just said, you know what, it's the right thing for the customer, they show the need, we do it. So we honor the ACP, even though it's ended, we still honor it because it's the right thing to do for people who can't afford it.
Can you explain that just very quickly?
The ACP? So if a customer, so think about your launch plans, your low income families, if they can prove that they have a financial need for assistance. The government set aside an amount of funds that ISPs could offer a discount to them. And then the ISP would go back through and get reimbursement. So again, Lakeland, we don't have a formal ACP plan, but we do honor that as long as they can prove they got a control number and they were approved for that. I just didn't want to leave people unconnected if they can't afford it.
How much is that discount amount, that $30?
It is, it was 50 at one time and then it was 30. So we do have customers that are kind of in the mix, but it's $30 a month discount.
Anything else?
Thanks for coming in.
You're welcome, you're there.
You mind my clothes?
No, please, Austin.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just wanted to get a quick update with D and ICD as well. So Mark's plan would be much more affordable compared to the D programs. The federal requirements around it are going to require providers to almost double the project costs. That's going to be coming to you guys and they're going to be asking for a double investment from the county when these projects come out. Just last week, I sent our task force, broadband task force an update. They put out a timeline for the D program, the first round will open on September 9th. We will have our final eligibility and all the addresses that will be eligible for funding for D on September 4th. And they're kind of at every round finished by January 29th. Very quick turnaround for $868 million to go throughout the entire state. So they're going to be doing three rounds of funding that will open up on that September 9th and close on January 29th. So it'll be very quick turnaround, very fast paced. Talking to the other fiber providers, it's going to accelerate their costs and raise those a lot as they come into the program. So we are going to be working with providers still to try to see what they can do with the program. But it will be very costly for them as well as breaking costs and all that. So that's the D update we have coming for ICD, my CEO on update as well, for the 10th round, there were 78 addresses awarded in the county. It was $374,000 and $2.2 million investment total project. Most of those were awarded by Surf Internet. We haven't confirmed if they're all surf, but we're pretty sure most of them are, but.
Do you know when the homeowners are going to know? Because I've had people like telling me in the mid wanting to build their home.
I can send you guys a complete address list and I don't know if you guys want to do a public announcement and say these are the addresses that were awarded by Surf. And we're also going to be trying to work with them to pick up additional addresses as they build those out so that as many homes as possible get connected through this extra funding. Since they're going to be running, you know, mile off County Road 9, for example, and that will be the address on the way, so.
Yeah, that would be great if you did that list to us.
Of course, I didn't do this, it's not you today. Any other questions for me or Mark?
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Yeah, thanks. Let's jump ahead real quick, turn EDC update and Adele, you've got somewhere to be, so.
Thanks, thank you. Good afternoon, happy to kind of make this a regular part of my presentation. Just a brief update what EDC is working on and what some of our more prominent companies are doing. Really encouraged by what's going on at Ultra. We were in front of County Council a couple of months ago asking for personal property, they're investing almost $20 million. They're booked on a second ship and they got a substantial reward from them, maybe to do many more son of police and really love that. So Willie County, one of, with Ultra is probably the largest, probably is the largest defense tractor north of Indianapolis. And just really key, the Naval Admiral was there not that long ago, really impressed. So really proud of what Ultra's doing and they continue to grow, they're going to have 175 employees over the next year or so. Really, Microcos is, continues to grow, they had done an expansion, have expansion almost finished. And they'll be taking requests for tax payment to counsel on, in August. As they're going to invest another $15 million in equipment, they continue to get beyond just the Warsaw, we have some, they're getting more on the spine and other areas. So obviously just a really cool story, you know, like great employer. Some really good news for South Whitley, the old Stumps building, Shindigs. Has been purchased by someone out of Wisconsin area, they're gonna, they bought the building, they're going to invest quite a bit of dollars into it. I think they have certain, certainly with one client or one, one personal lease part of it with the Amazon warehouse in Allen County. So they like the proximity and that. But it's a great story on, if you've ever been in that building, it's not the world's greatest building and for somebody to figure out how to make it work is really important to sell.
They do some jobs there or?
Yeah, there won't be too many to start with, but you know, it gets, it gets it back on the tax payroll and. Yeah, it's really good to see that building not falling in further disrepair.
And Shindigs had made some investments in, in the building, like recent investments before they closed, right?
They had, but there was a really unfortunate incident with the building. With somebody who was subleasing it, turned off the heat. Didn't drain the water, the fire suppression. And like two Christmas Eve's ago, they bursted, nobody caught it, drained the tower, flooded the basement. And then subsequently, one of the brick facade of the near walls fell because of that. So there was quite a bit of damage in this property owner's water, was wanted to accept that and make quite a bit of it.
Good, that's great.
Really, yeah. Just a couple of interesting prospects we're working on. We've got a spec building off 100 over there by Salreye Tribe, it's 33,000 approximately in McKee Park. Try and, you know, let somebody know, just well, they're ready to go. Basically ready to go, it's not quite finished out. Submitted that building on an aerospace and defense. Submitted that building on an aerospace and defense firm. Was looking to do engine repairs. I'm not sure exactly what all, but that fit with that. That came from originally, then there was a state lead boot production process, processing facility. Again, I don't know exactly what it was, but it was state lead, and we submitted it on that. So, a couple of the, the bigger projects, some of the smaller things, we, you know, we continue to work with a lot of the smaller companies throughout the county. We have the Small Business Development Center that comes into effect. They were here just today. We're helping, it's, it's free services, state drives, but they work out at EDC's offices and help people like, like, you know, River Basin, move over, and we've got a few other smaller companies that we're helping, we're brewing with them. And really, really neat to see how many small businesses take advantage of having, you know, a state resource coming in here. So, that's really, that's fun. You know, some things regionally that we're working on, Ready, everybody's familiar with Ready, but State Program. It's like this iteration that came in after regional cities. Last year, been almost a year and a half ago. We get to participate that because Willie County, along with ten other counties, part of the Regional Development Authority. The other ones would administer that program and actually issue the dollars. We get a half a million dollars from that to help with the Chair of Us Pacific Center. This year, we're probably going to ask for quite a bit more in that for the two housing projects. The Ready's really works well for infrastructure projects, for workforce housing, and, and just hang in the housing shortage. So, I'm, I'm working with the RDA and then the Chair of Us Go and with Ponte City on a couple of asks to match investment that the locals and the private developer are putting in around housing. Usually, these are, we're going to ask to help for the water and sewer infrastructure, which is considerable. Another small little thing that I like doing, that's not a lot of money, but we have a small kind of program or competitions. We were able to support two younger folks at the four age and under wrote a couple of their projects. Not a lot of money, but I do like, you know, that we get a little bit involved in. Yeah. Any questions?
No, that's great.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, backing up, the next item on the agenda will be the new era proposal. I know you have a chance to review.
Yeah, I had one question. It came and got the answer to it just a little bit ago. It says that they'll, you periodic billing, but they didn't really say what that meant. And she phoned up with them. They said they would send a bill when materials are in, the materials, and then a final bill when they're complete. So, you two hold up.
So, just for common knowledge, for public knowledge, this is the audio and visual infrastructure for the courtroom that will be used in the future.
This is not a bid or anything. This is, this is the cost, right?
Yeah, this is the cost. It isn't, it wasn't.
We don't need to accept it or anything, or?
No, we, we do. So, we got prices, pricing from, I don't know if that's in front of us right now, but they're pricing from Jabs. We have pricing from New Era, and we have pricing from.
BIS.
B I S. And, and this was the lowest ends, the, we feel that this bid that we received for this, so.
I would make a motion to allow Chairman Banks to assign the new era on behalf of the county.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Is there anything that we should add? I'm comfortable with that. So, I call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hands, and opposed, the same in that passage unanimously. The next item on the agenda today is recommendations on positions and compensation for the 2025 budget. Is there anyone who's, Jenny, are you wanting to speak with us a little bit? I know that this comes from statute that suggests or an ordinance, it's either statute or, or ordinance.
I think I have some understanding. I saw across an IC code that basically states in July of every year, part of the budget process is the auditors supposed to present to the board the salaries and number of positions basically that all the departments have, are proposing for the next year. So.
Okay.
And then from there, my understanding of the code is that in August, you're, you're prepared if you want to give a recommendation to council.
Okay.
So, today is just, you know, presenting to you.
Yeah, yeah, great. So, I think it'd probably be appropriate then for us to take this under advisement and address it in our next meeting with the, with the recommendation to council.
Should we need that form of motion?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
I, I think, I just think we'll just take it out of advisement, be prepared for the next meeting and make, make a decision, and then it can be shared with County Council on their August meeting. Does that sound good to you, Tammy?
Yeah.
Let's see. The next item on the agenda today is the payroll accounts payable claims approval.
I went on earlier and looked over most of the claims, I think, for your ship, and also looked some over last week. Everything I looked at was in order, so I would make a motion to approve claims.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve plans. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Those claims. Carol?
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I looked over everything. It would be in order, and so I will move to approve payroll.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve payroll. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and that motion carries unanimously. And while we're signing, has everyone had a chance to review the meeting minutes from July first, two thousand twenty-four?
Yes, I only found a couple of errors. Communities misspelled here, etc., and then my name is actually misspelled in several places. Got C, Schuman. Other than that, everything will be accurate.
I would entertain a motion to approve with corrections.
So moved.
I will say.
I'll second, and call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hands, and opposed, the same in that passage unanimously. Do you want to bring an amended copy, and we'll sign that. Okay, at this time, we'll open up for public comment. If there's anything anyone would like to add today, please feel free to come forward. We'll be happy to hear from you. Andy, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, nothing more.
I know that we had a previous discussion about the antenna and, and the fact that it's over fifty thousand, and it was approved by commissioners in error. It was a mistake, and I'll, I'll own that, but you just want to give an update on where we see what, what we're doing.
Yeah, I think that there, there's a mechanism whereby that should have probably been issued as a change order because you have the same company. You already have a six hundred, seven thousand dollar contract with them, and this was something additional they were doing. And so, I spoke into the company. Their owner was out of the country for a week. So, when he got back, they were going to talk to him about reissuing that as a change order, which would be then permissible, because you can do a change order on a contract as long as it's not over twenty percent of the contract. So, you'd be fine there if it was just issued as a change order instead of a new bid.
Okay.
So, I'm just waiting for the owner to get back.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Tammy, is there anything you'd like to add from the auditor's office? Commissioner Mason, Commissioner Schuman.
Just encourage the public to get out and attend the one-hundredth annual with the County Four-H Fair this week.
All right.
threatens ends, I believe the last day of the fair is Wednesday, and then the auction's Thursday.
Okay, and I have nothing to add, so at this time, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thanks for coming.